Hare Krishna, welcome back. Om Namah Bhagavate Vasudevaya.
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 Om Agnayana Timirandasya, Agnayana Anjanashalakaya, Chakshurunvilitam Yena Tasmeh Sri Guraveen Namaha. Namah Om Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhootale, Sri Mate Bhakti Vaidanta Swami Nithinamaneni. Namaste Saraswati Devay Gauravaani Pracharinam, Nirvisheshaa Shunyavadee Paashatke Deshatarinam. Vancha Kalpataru Besyaakrupasindu Beevacha Prititanaampavanibyo Vaishnavibyo Namaha. Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabha Nityananda, Sri Advaita Gada Dariva Sadhi Gaurabhaktarunda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna Hare Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Rama Rama Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, welcome to all the devotees. Yesterday evening we had a brief session, we were discussing about one and a half hour. So wherein we saw that how Mahavisnu by glancing upon Prakruti, the material nature, made up of three modes, okay, imprignates her with Kala Shakti and Jio Shakti. As a result of that, the Prakruti produces twenty-four material elements, starting with Mahatatva. Mahatatva means Chaitana. And then Sutrakatva, Sutratatva means breathing. Then Ahankara, Ahankara means identity. Then Mind, Intelligence, Five Jnayanindriyas, Five Knowledge Acquiring Senses, The Ears, Skin, Eyes, Tongue and Nostril. And Five Karmaindrias, Five Working Senses, The Mouth, Hands, Legs, Genital and Anus. And Five Panchmahabhutas, Earth, Water, Fire, Air, Ether. And Five Tanmatras are five sense objects. Shabdha, Sparsha, Rupa, Rasa, Gandha. So like this, all these different elements are produced along with their devatas. Every element has a devata who will be supervising the activities of the particular element. So all the devatas are praying to Lord Vishnu, "Oh Lord, you have created us, please engage us in your service." Then Mahavisnu entering into all these twenty-four elements like Vibhrushakti energy, brings them together, from that mixture, he creates unlimited Brahmandas. Ananta Koti Brahmandas are formed from that mixture. So Brahmanda basically it is a hollow shell, inside is all empty, outside there is only covering. That covering has got seven layers. Coconut, have you seen coconut? Inside the coconut we have some water and surrounding that we have coconut pulp, then coconut shell, then coconut fiber, then the green outer layer, outer skin. Like the multiple coverings are there now, like that our universe also has seven such coverings. The first covering is Earth, then Water, then Fire, then Air, then Ether. Then Ahankara and finally Mahatatva. There are total seven layers that are there within our universe. So those are the different layers within our Brahmanda. And all the Brahmandas are simply floating on the Karan Ocean. They are all lying down on the Karan Ocean lifelessly, so like this. So this is how the, see, this is how the twenty-four elements were there. So Lord Vishnu entering into each and every element, all that Ahankara, Mahatatva, Prana, Mind, Intelligence, Ten Senses etcetera etcetera. He entered into all the elements and bringing them together, combined them. And from that combination there came unlimited universes and all of them are floating in the Karan Ocean. And they don't know what to do, lifeless, because somebody need to make them move on. So then the same Karan Daksha Vishnu expands as Garbodaksha Vishnu enters into each and every universe. So Bhagavatan talks about, he is entering into our universe. So he enters into our universe, when he entered into our universe it is completely dark. There was nothing, it was only a dark golden shell, it's not dark, everything is, the shell is floating in the ocean. Now he creates Garbodakavoshan which occupy the lower half of the universe and Ether which occupy the upper of the universe. Then he goes deep inside the waters in order to take rest, is in yoga nidra. Then, as time comes for the creation to go on, Garbodaksha Vishnu glances upon his own abdomen. As he glances upon his own abdomen, from his navel there comes a beautiful lotus. Consisting of lotus leaf, lotus stem and lotus flower. It is lying above the waters. In order to move on the creation, the same Garbodaksha Vishnu expands as Shirodaksha Vishnu. And he enters into that lotus as Paramatma, the Super Soul. Then on top of that lotus, the first living entity Brahma appears. And Brahma also trying to find out the source of this lotus and source of himself. He spends about hundred years, over hundred years. That much time he was trying here and there, going everywhere and trying to find out the source, but he could not find. But by good fortune, he hears two letters, Ta Pa Ta Pa, then he understood he need to do Tapasya. He performs Tapasya, then the Lord appears and Lord empowers him, what to do and how to do etcetera. As empowered by the Supreme Lord with all the knowledge and with all the information, what and how he is supposed to do. So he divides that lotus into, see here, so Brahma had the Arshana Garbodaksha Vishnu, he offered prayers, he got empowerment. With the empowerment, he realized that he has to divide this lotus into multiple divisions and create different variety of living entities who will be residing in all these lokas. Since there are three modes, Satvaguna, Rajaguna and Tamoguna, he divided the lotus into three divisions. Svarga Loka meant for Satvaguni people, Boor Loka meant for Rajaguni people, Boor Loka was Tamoguni people, like the retard. But he thought, no, this is too small, let there be more divisions. Then he divided this further into fourteen divisions with fourteen lokas. So currently now we have fourteen lokas within our universe. Boor Loka, Boor Loka, Svarga Loka, Mahar Loka, Janal Loka, Tapal Loka, Satya Loka, Atala, Vitala, Sutila, Talatala, Mahatala, Rasatala and Patala. Like this, the different lokas are made, they are meant for different variety of living entities. And today we will be discussing, who are those different variety of living entities and where they are staying? And why are they located in different places? What was the logic behind all these things? And also we understand what is the purpose of creation? Why the Lord is creating this enormous universe with so many divisions and subdivisions, all these things? Something which is very much important for all of us to carry on and the path of bhakti. We will try to discuss today. So this was all by Mahavisnu which is known as the primary creation. And now what Brahma does afterwards is what is known as Visarga, the secondary creation. So Lord Brahma uses the same twenty-four elements with which the entire universe is formed. With the same twenty-four elements, our bodies are also formed. What Lord Brahma does is, he creates the physical body for all the living entities that are living, from Patala all the way up to Satyaloka. Everyone, all of us have got our bodies designed by Brahma. So that we will see today, how does he do it, why does he do it, these are two things we will understand. The creation made by Brahma specifically by his mind and by his body to populate the fourteen planetary systems that he had just created from the lotus. From the lotus he made fourteen divisions. Now like you are a builder, you constructed a fourteen-story building. Either you need to sell, you need to give an lease or you need to give an rent. People come and occupy, otherwise it is simply lying there. Same way Brahma's business is, he has prepared a fourteen-story building, now he has to populate. So in that way. So these are the fourteen lokas. Boor Loka, Boor Loka, all the way up to Satyaloka and Atala Vitala up to Patala. So this we have already seen. So now Bhagavatan defines the secondary creation as, "Vibhammanukunavaisammyadvisarga purushasmuta." Visarga is the creation of bodies for different variety of living entities by the resultant combination of the same twenty-four elements. Because we have twenty-four elements now, combining them only the universe is formed. And combining them only, all our physical forms are made. Our body is made up of twenty-four elements. Thus Brahma creates both moving and non-moving living entities. So now the point comes, it means giving living entities forms with intelligence, senses and the gross body etcetera. But for what purpose Brahmaji is doing this? For engaging in mental enjoyment and for pursuing liberation. Jiva comes to this material world for two purposes. One is to fulfill our desires or to explore our ambitions. Once it is done, then go back home back to Godhead. These are the two purposes for which the universe has been created. And Brahma provides us the material body and the all the different variety of facilities around us. So Bhagavatan says, especially in relation to human beings we can take it. For human beings, we have buddhi, we have ten senses, five jnayanindrias, nine active senses, five karmaindrias, action senses. Mana, there is mind also, prana, there are ten pranas within our body. Every person has ten pranas within us which are actually doing all the activities that we are doing. Now please tell me, how many of you are consciously breathing? Are you consciously breathing? How many of you consciously blinking your eyes? How many of you occasionally yawn? How many of you consciously digest what you eat? Or how many of you endeavor in the sense to excrete stool and urine? Okay? All these things are voluntarily done by the pranas. The pranas will do all these activities and also other activities that we do with the intention. We speak, we take lift from hand and give it to somebody, collect it from muddy, operate mobile, operate laptop and walk. All the other activities, read something, everything that we do, some things we do intentionally, something we do unknowingly unconsciously. Both the activities are done by the pranas. It is the pranas which are like the actuators, in Indian language we call them as sarvo mechanism. Motor mechanism. There is a motor switch on, things are automatically happening. When you switch on the bore well, the water goes upward. How it happens you don't know but it happens, there is a mechanism inbuilt in that. Same way in this body also, the motor mechanisms are inbuilt by these ten pranas. They act as a motor system. Even to sleep also they need to have. It is the pranas which make us sleep, it is the pranas which make us awake. It is the pranas which make us talk, it is the pranas which make us keep quiet. Everything that we do, it is done by pranas. So like that. So Buddhi Indriya Manaprananam Jananamasrajat Prabhu. So Lord Brahma is giving all these things to us, for what purpose? Matharatham. There are five tanmatras we just discussed, what are the five tanmatras? Five tanmatras, five sense objects, what are the five sense objects? Ah, five tanmatras and subjects. Ah, shabdha which we hear through our ears, sound. Sparsha, touch. This is very cold, even down also very cold, that's why we are put mat, so that we feel comfortable. Shabdha, Sparsha which we experience through our skin and Rupa which we are able to see through our eyes. Rasa which we are able to taste through our tongue and Gandha which we are able to smell through our nostril. These are the five tanmatras. Whatever enjoyment all of us want to experience in this world is nothing but the combination of these five things. Please give an example, what are the different things that we want to enjoy? Other than prasadum, any other example you can take, prasadum is general example. What you want to?
Luxury cars.
Ah?
Luxury cars.
Luxury cars you want to possess? Okay, fine. So what luxury is there in that? What kind of enjoyment you get in that?
Like comfortable seats.
Ah, comfortable seats, good Sparsha, soft cushion on a chahiye.
Inwood massage system.
Okay.
Good speakers to hear.
Ah, good speakers to hear. Aka sound requirement is taken care, aka touch requirement is taken care.
Should look good, should have a good appearance.
Ah, good appearance, your eye requirement is also taken care. Shabdhas, Sparsha, Rupa, good looking. Everyone want to have latest model, smart looking car and all, okay? Rupa and then?
Safety.
Ah, safety is there, okay?
And fragrance for Ganja.
Ah, nice fragrance inside. So like that, everything that you take, all these five things are there. Good car, similarly a good bungalow. You want a good bungalow, soft cushion bed, sofa system, okay? And nice beautiful scenic place, scenic photographs and all. Everyone want to have their main hall now, they keep all the beautiful things. And then nice music system and nice kitchen so that nice food will come. So Rasa, Rupa, Gandha, everything is taken care in that. Everything that you take, it is nothing but the combination of these five things. Our enjoyment is nothing more than these five things. There is sixth thing also that is called thought, soch, soch, vichar. Humne kuch soch le, wo bhi ho gaya, matab uska bhi aand rahe ta hai. So bahut ek jagat me humara aand, aech chochiye ke peecher rahe ta hai bas, iske alwa kuch aand hai hi nahi. Shabdha, Sparsha, Rupa, Rasa, Gandha or soch. Planning, soch, jo bhi, usme aapko ab jaise bol sakte hai vaise. These are the five things, the principal factors of enjoyment. So we are enjoying in this life. If we are done with, fine, if we are not done with, we want to go to suffer. Abhi human being ka enjoyment bahut choti hai, devata log bahut jada enjoy karte, main devata banu, to devata banenge. Abhi human beings me limitation hai, hum jab chahe ta unna sakte. To unna ka ichhaa yetao pakshi banu. Dhawnai ka ichhaa bante yetao gora banu. So like that, humara ichhaa ashar ala gala shereer ko prapt karte, bawartham. If we are not satisfied with the enjoyment that you have experienced in one lifespan, we enter into a new species to enjoy in a different way. Like that, one day we have gone through everything, everything is done, abhi bahut ho gaya. Abhi wapas gar jayenge. You have come to material world to enjoy. Aka fantasy khatam ho gaya, abhi wapas gar laot na hai. Atmanikalpana cha, gar laotne ke liye bhi bahut ek jagat banaye. So humare ichhaa ko pure karne ke liye aur wapas jana ke liye, ye dono cheez ke liye bahut ek jagat banaya tha. Same cheez again, ebir bhutaani bhutaani, bhutaatma, mahabhute mahabujai, swasanjajachava dandau, swatsa matratma prasiddhaiye. Matra prasiddhaiye, atma prasiddhaiye. The bahut ek, material world is made for enjoying five tanmatras and also to go back home back to Godhead. How we try to enjoy in this world, we will discuss now, in what are the different ways that we enjoy? And how we can go back home back to Godhead? Who are all assisting us, how this world is in a, in helping agent for us to go back home back to Godhead? They are the two things we will be discussing today. But before that, which is your favorite verse from Bhagavad Gita? All of you hear some classes from Bhagavad Gita regularly? Here there you listen from Bhagavad Gita slokas also and Gita Janty you must have recited the entire Bhagavad Gita also? Other times also some of you must read Bhagavad Gita also? But which is your favorite sloka? Okay, okay, bas itna kafi, aur dusra, kisi aur ka? Aur kisi aur ka? Aur kisi aur ka? Aur kisi aur ka? Okay, aur? Okay, okay, pura sloka baad mat batao, just one first, one word. Aur? Oh super, aur? Okay, what was that verse which comes two times in Bhagavad Gita? Okay, fine, what was that verse which comes two times in Bhagavad Gita? Ah, pura, pura batao. Come, come, fast, fast. Do bar aate, bhagavata sloka ek ek bar aate Bhagavad Gita me, usko yaad kiya aap log, do bar aate, unke yaad na kiya? Manmana bhaavat bhakto madhyaji maam namaskaro. Maam eveshi satyamte atma pratijane priyosame. This is eighteen chapters sloka, the same sloka comes in nine chapters also. Anyone can tell me what is the meaning of this sloka? May not be exactly somewhat kind of paraphrasing. Ah, pura, pura translation, pura batao. Oto zarwadarman parthijyama mekam sharanamraja, hamta sarvabhi bhuksheshamashya, oarska, oarsna, everska translation. Koi bhi dekhe badha batao. Dekhe bhi badh sakte, badh patate. So karne se kya hoga? Karo, 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 bol re, karne se kya hoga? Kuch batao, kuch millega to karenge na, aisa pakad me kyu karenge?
Surely you will come to me.
Ah?
Surely you will come to me.
Surely you will come to me. So there is a incentive is given, so that we are inspired to do something, okay? So aapka manvaaplan karo, mera pranam karo, mera bhakti karo, mera yeh karo, wo karo, wo karne se aap mere paas aajayenge. And there is one more sloka that comes in Bhagavad Gita, this is very famous sloka. It may not appear to you very famous, but it is very important sloka. Ye etam maam prapatyante tamstaiva bajamyam. What is the meaning of this line?
As you aspire, jaise aap aspire karte ho, vaise reciprocate ho.
Ah, same, jaise aap seva karte me vaise reciprocate. Isko yaad rokho, we will be discussing two-three slides, afterwards we will again discuss this verse. But uske pehle we discuss, what is the meaning of, "Manmana bhaavat bhakto madhyaji maam namaskaro, maam eveshi satyamte pratijane priyosame." In the ninth chapter, the last turn bit different. Okay? Maam eva eshasi yuktaivam atmanam matparayanam. So there also you will come to me is there, yukta vay means you will come to me. Those who consider me as their self, they will come to me obviously. So here Bhagwan ne char cheez bataya tha, manmana, madbhakto, madhyaji, maam namaskaro. So what is the meaning of these four words, let us try to analyze, okay? Now, just before that, one simple question. All of you are students, some of you are already working. Someone not student but who is working, if I ask you, what is under your position, what belongs to you? Then what is your answer? What all that belongs to you as of today? What all you possess? Anybody who is working here? What all belongs to you, what all you possess? Abhi, koi, of course, today you may not be having so much, but you assume that whatever property of your father, you will be inherited for that. So including all that you tell me, what all you possess? Ah? Then, uske baad?
Karma.
Ba?
Karma.
Ah?
Karma.
Karma, that's all? Ah? Ah, no, no, don't analyze too much. As of today, what all you possess?
Degree.
Ah, degree aur?
Home.
Ah? Home, your father's home, if there is a vehicle, vehicle, if there is a land, land, if there is some bank balance, bank balance. You are already earning na, every month salary will be created to bank balance na, that is also yours. Okay then? Kisika, aapka, all of your boys, kisika shaadi nahi ho na, idhar, kisika shaadi ho gaya? Shaadi hoa kya? Shaadi ke baad, patni, bacha aur gharwala parivar, ye sab, mera hai, yes? And then? Your office space, jo office me aapke liye cubicle diya hoga na, wo bhi aapka hai. Olak, laptop or desktop wo aapka hai, okay? Aur? One more important thing. This body, mera hai, ye shereer mera hai. Ye sab hai na? Whatever you may say, mera, 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 keep that in mind and let us discuss. First of all, as he said, from there we start. Manmana. So Lord is saying that, being my devotee, offer your mind to me. Of course, this is the translation, will not see the translation now, will get into the explanation. By concentrating your mind on me, by being my devotee, worshipping me and offering respects to me, you will attain me only Lord Krishna with human form, the son of Devaki. Who is most affectionate to you with dark plank complexion and the color of the blue lotus. Basically, Lord Krishna is speaking, if you do all these things to me, you will attain me. Why and how, we will discuss later, but first we will discuss one by one. Bhavamadbhakto, first of all become a devotee. Make yourself comfortable to be as a devotee. That means, don't remain as a karmi, jnani, yogi or any other atheist or panthis, this is, no, all those things are not there. First of all become devotee and then do these four things. So what are the four things? First of all, manmana. Give your mind as a gift to me, to whom? Lord Shamasundara, with moon-like face, with shining locks of hair, beautiful eyebrows, raining nectar in the form of glance of sweet mercy. Now, all of you are friends to each other. Bich bich me unka birthday aate rehte, kuch gift dete hai, chota bada jo bhi hai. When you give the gift, whom it belongs to? After you have given some gift, to whom it belongs to? Who has taken it, it belongs to that person only. You don't have any right upon that gift. Ek bar de diya, wo aapka nahi, wo unka hai. So Lord is saying same thing. Give your mind to me as a gift. Matalab ek bar aapka man ko Bhagwan ka de diya na, wo Bhagwan ka hai, aapka hai hi nahi. Usko aap, aapke liye use nahi kar sakte. That is manmana. People say, I lost, not, they don't say, they wear a t-shirt which is written that I lost my heart in Undawan. But Undawan me gaya, pata nahi, college me girl ke pasat gaya hoga. But yahan par pre-condition is there, when you give it as a gift, you don't have any rights upon it. Are you getting, what do you mean by this? Manmana means, ek bar Bhagwan ko de diya, matalab uske upar humara right hai hi nahi, wo mera nahi abhi. Not only mind, give your mind, give your intelligence, give your ego and give your consciousness as a gift to me. Do Bhagwan ne ek word you de diji, ek bar mujhe de diya na, wo mera hai, aapke liye use nahi kar sakte. But mere liye use kar sakte, mera seve ke liye usko... For my service, you can use it. Your mind, your wisdom, your ahankar, and your mind, your mind, you can use it for my service, but not for yourself. When, one time I gave a gift to you. Until you give it, you can use it. Okay? Four subtle elements need to be given to the Supreme Lord as a gift. Next. It means, always think of me. Our mind, we think about it, we think about it. After giving, we only think about God. Contemplate upon my pastimes and qualities. Wisdom. Put it in this. What do God do, how do God do? How good God is, how faithful he is, how he is, how he is, above us. Contemplate it. Identify yourself as my devotee. Somebody asks, who are you? I am devotee of Lord Krishna. Otherwise, we say, who are you? I am electrical engineer, mechanical engineer, I am data science engineer, I am computer science engineer. So I am nanotechnology engineer, like that we say. It is not true. Ah, I say? I am Krishna. Then, finally, always be Krishna conscious. Offering mind, Krishna means, always be Krishna conscious. This is the meaning of the first word, manmana. Then, madbhakta. What is the definition of bhakti? Bhakti means what? Means what? Some details. How do you, how do you perform bhakti? How do you serve? Okay, then? 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 Okay. Serving the Lord, employing all our senses. We have ten senses, five karmi, five jnannandriyas. Whatever you are telling, is all part of this only, nothing beyond that. Use your ears to hear Krishna kata. Use your mouth to speak Krishna kata. Use your tongue to taste Krishna prasadam. So like that. Employing all our senses in the service of Supreme Lord. Give all your senses such as ears to me. Perform worship of me, using all the senses, research services as hearing, chanting, seeing my farm, cleaning and anointing my temple, picking flowers, offering me garlands, ornaments, umbrella, chamarah, etc. Doing all these things. Basically, shravanam, kirtanam, smaranam, not, smaranam comes in the manmana. Pathasivanam, archanam, all these things. Which we employ our senses, doing all these things is called madbhakta. Meaning, with the ten senses, whatever we are supposed to do, do it for the Supreme Lord. That means, madbhakta. Then? This indicates that, engage your jnannandriyas and karmindriyas in my service such as hearing, anointing, seeing, tasting, smelling, describing my glories, working for me, etc. All those things are included. What all you said, everything is included in this. Then third word, madhyaji. Now, Prabhuji said, he wants to, he has a car. Car is the source of all enjoyment. Everything is there in that, okay? Like that, other than this body, everything in front of us, the entire universe is meant for our enjoyment. The entire universe is an object of our enjoyment. It may be people, it may be the places, it may be the objects. Some things are for eating, some things are for touching, some things are for seeing, some things are for listening. Some things are for tasting and smelling. Everything that is there in the entire world is meant for our enjoyment. And Lord says, madhyaji. Use this entire universe instead of your enjoyment for my enjoyment. Where you are facing, you should engage for God's sake. Your happiness is not for God's sake. That is called madhyaji. Worship me by giving me objects such as ganda. Outside, in college, in school, students, what do they do? Wake up, don't know, but they wear dantars. Whether they take bath or not, we are not sure. But before they come out, they apply so much dantars because they want to smell nicely. Ganda. And we use flowers and medicines. In their room also, they put all that, what do you call that? Room freshener, that they use because they want to smell nicely. And lamp, the whole house is decorated with all the beautiful lamps. And naivadya, they go to different restaurants to enjoy. Okay? All these things. Everything that is there in the entire world is employed in my devotion service. Sound, ring the bell, play the instruments, sing the kirtan, sound is accomplished. You can hear something good, hear it? When you go to restaurant, pray for God's blessing. Hmm? You want dantars, room freshener, put agarbatti and doob stick. Meaning, in relation to Supreme Lord. That is called madhyaji. Use this entire world stuff for your enjoyment, first serve Krishna and accept prasadam. Lord is not saying you don't enjoy, but accept only Mahaprasad. Don't be the first recipient. Let the God be the first recipient. So in that way, this is called madhyaji. Indicates that engage everything that is in your possession, which acts as the object of enjoyment. In my service. Your house, make a mosque for God's service. Your kitchen, make a kitchen for God's service. So like that. Now your vehicle, use it in Lord's service, worship it, so like that. And finally, maam namaskaru. Make a mosque, thank you. With our body and also do other things also. Oh Arjuna, just give me respects by falling on the ground with the whole body, touching the ground with seven or eight limbs. We say now, saashtanga pranam. Sa asta anga pranam. When we do asta anga pranam means, our legs, our hands, our face, our eyes, our nostril, mouth, heart, everything is offered to Supreme Lord in that saashtanga pranam. That means overall, our grass body is offered in the service of the Supreme Lord. It is said that, when you do saashtanga pranam, that is most volatile situation. Anybody can kill you at that time. But you will not be doubting that somebody will kill me. When you are offering obeisance, you have God's blessing. I will go down. If I go down, God bless, then you thank God. So like that. So in this way? Whatever within our possession, we have been offering now. Manmana, man, wisdom, ahankar, mind, we offered. Madbhakta, five jnannandriyas, five karmindriyas, four plus ten. Then maam mad, madhyaji, the five tammatras. The entire world is a tamatra for us. We are offering the five tamatis, the Lord's service. Shabdhas, parashas, rupa, rasa, ganda. And then, maam namaskaru. This entire body made up of panchamha bhutas, earth, water, fire, weather. We are offering to Supreme Lord. That means, our body and the entire universe is made up of twenty-four elements. We are offering all the twenty-four elements in the service of Supreme Lord. This is what we have. If we offer everything that we, as a service to Supreme Lord. The Lord has to reciprocate equally. If we have offered everything that we have to the Lord, Lord has to give us everything he possess to us. You are able to follow? If we give everything that we have to the Lord, Lord will give everything that he possess to us. So in everything that we give to Lord, we ourselves are there. We are offering this entire body which is in our possession. Same way, the Lord has to give his own body to us. In our case, we are different, our body is different. In the case of the Lord, the Lord and Lord's body are not different. They are the same. The Lord has to give himself to us. He does so. That is the meaning of this verse. Pratyajane, I am making a vow. If you offer yourself to me, I will give myself to you. How many of you want Krishna? Then offer all you have to Krishna. That is the only solution. There is no other solution. This is called bhakti. Bhakti means? Whatever we have, engage in the service of Supreme Lord. Eventually, by seeing all these things, Lord has to give himself to us. That's all, that is bhakti. Bhakti means, it is not a big thing, that you have to do this, do that, all these things are not required. The way we surrender to Supreme Lord, the way he reciprocates with us. If we give everything that we have to him, he will give everything that he has to us. That is how the Lord creates. That is how the Lord takes care of all of us. So now, let us get into the secondary creation. This is the basis behind. What was the purpose of the creation and how to? The purpose is to give facility to enjoy and to go back, come back to God. How to go back to God? Whatever we have offered to Supreme Lord, we can go back, come back to God, it's simple, nothing more than that. Now? How things are happening, the way things are happening now around us? Prakruti has three components. Pradana, avidya and vidya. Pradana produces twenty-four elements. Mahatavva, ahankara, man, wisdom, five jnannandriyas, five karmindriyas, five panchamha bhutas, five tammatras. All these twenty-four elements are produced by pradana. Which are manifesting the entire universe, which are also manifesting in the form of our physical body. So everything is done by these twenty-four elements. The matter is pradana. At individual level, universal level. But, there is something called as avidya. Avidya is a covering around the soul. Avidya has got five aspects. When the jiva, in the spiritual world, jiva understand that, I am Krishna's servant. Jiveera sorupoi Krishna tidas. But when the same jiva comes to the material world, for the purpose of enjoyment, jiva has to forget this. If jiva always remember that I am Krishna, I will enjoy. He cannot enjoy. So first of all, one has to forget what one was, then only you can enjoy in a different place. So avidya means, forgetfulness of? One's? Relationship with Supreme Lord. Once a real position, one forgets. But we need to have some identity in this world. That identity is given by Asmita. Currently, we are all human beings, we are all male. Because we are in a male human body. In some other life, we may be in devata body. That time we are devatas. Some other life, we may be in animal body, that time we are animal. That is the identity given to us. That is given by Asmita. Asmita means, the body in which we are residing, we get an identity with respect to that. While living in that particular body, we make friends with similar kind of species. And we develop attachment to them. This is a good friend, this is my friend. This is my friend. Wife, children, friends, relatives, they are all our friend. We want to be with them for the entire life, that is called raga. Now there is a problem. College, triangle love story. One boy loving one girl, other boy also loving the same girl. There is only one girl, but there are two people who want to love her. There is a competition. In between them, there is a rivalry. That is called dvisha. There is only one object of enjoyment, but two people are competing each other, so there is an enemy between them. In the college, two boys might be fighting for a girl. At the home, two brothers are fighting for the property. So like that. Everywhere it is there, there is dvisha. And everyone knows that? Ah, one life. Before death, whatever happens, have fun. Shimla, Darjeeling, huh? Kulu, Manali, Korai canal, Araku. Where you go, there you go, 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 have fun. Because, one time death will come, but who will know? One life, live your life. Don't think. That is called abhinivesha. Everyone psychologically knows that, there is something called as death. Before death comes, let me enjoy as much as possible. If this is the purpose of life, what people will do? Ah, some rules, say, rules, don't worry, who knows? Do what you want, do it. We say, we don't know, who said, you are a fool, leave it. Do what you want, do it. Do what you want, do it. Go, go, do what you want, do it. Life is meant for? Enjoyment. By doing all these things, one does so many sinful activities. As a result of that, one is bound in this material world. These are the five things which are the cause of bondage. Forgetfulness of our true identity. Identifying with the body in which we are living. And making friends with the people who are giving us enjoyment. Making enemy with the people who are obstructing our enjoyment. And before death comes, enjoy as much as possible. They are the five things, five coverings of avidya, which are binding us in this material world. As a result of these five things, we have to continue life after life. Karma, karma, karmic bondage in this world. So what is the way out? How we can come out of these bondage created by these five coverings? Take shelter of? Vidya. Which destroys the five types of ignorance caused by avidya. So what is vidya? Vidya means the Vedic literatures, which teaches karma, jhana, yoga, tapasya, vairagya and bhakti. Anybody takes shelter of any of these six things, they try to keep themselves under control. They want to follow some rules and regulations, which are described in the Vedic literatures. So that, they are sure that, okay, okay. They are leading a life as per the Vedic injunctions, they are not put into karma bandhan. Here, the Vedas never deny you enjoy in this material world. They always guide you how to enjoy in a proper way. Don't go in a? Wrong way. If you do the same thing in a wrong way, you are bound by karma. If you do in a proper way, you are not bound by karma. A simple example. As per Bhagavad Gita. Food. Ekna shista sinashantoo muchante sarva kilbisha. Bhunjate te agama papa, e pachanti atmakaranath. Out of one's own mind, mental languidness for tongue pleasure, one goes to restaurant and eats whatever is there. They are simply eating agama papa, greatest sin. But ekna shista, those who are eating prasadam, which is offered to Lord Eknya, Lord Vishnu. Muchante sarva kilbisha, they are freed from all the? Sinful reactions. Eating is not bad. Having a desire to eat some palatable dishes is not bad. But eat properly. Eat that which is offered to Supreme Lord, no karma bandhan. If you eat that, that is something that is not offered to Supreme Lord, you are bound by karma. A simple thing. In one's lifetime of eighty years, on average? How many rice grains we eat? Anyone can estimate approximately. In eighty years, of course, I have taken the example of rice because I am coming from South India. So most of you might be eating chapati also. Even chapati, how many wheat grains one will eat in one's lifetime? Some number you tell, huh? What is the problem? Some, some hundred crores. Okay. One wheat plant, how many wheat grains it will produce approximately? Have you seen? Yeah, two hundred to five hundred, not five thousand, not one, maximum two hundred. Two hundred to fifty, last pass, two hundred, take it. So how many we are eating? Hundred crores, by two hundred, how much it will be? Fifty lakh. Fifty lakh times we need to take birth as a wheat plant. If we are in a hurry, we will have to pay. Don't say that I have paid five hundred rupees to the shop walla to purchase some ten kg bag. That does not work. Don't say that I have paid five hundred rupees to the shopwala to purchase some ten kg bag, that does not work. Shopwala, jo mainath kiya, uske liye paisa diya. But jo paid, jo mainath kiya, uske liye paisa diya kabhi? You can only repay by becoming like that. Whatever we have accepted from a paid, we can repay only by becoming a paid. We cannot repay in wealth, in money. Because the payment also should be of equal level, it cannot be different level. Water system. Like that, everything that we eat in our entire life, that many times you have to take birth. If somebody eats non-vegetarian food, for eating even one piece of non-vegetarian, you have to kill one animal. That many times one has to take birth as an animal. That is karma rule, that is the rule of the Shastra. Not only for animal species, even for vegetables also, this rule applies. Not, you cannot, you don't have any right to say that I have paid money for it. Ap money pay kiya, o admi ke liye. O formal ke liye pay kiya hoga, shopkeeper ke liye pay kiya hoga, cook ke liye pay kiya hoga, restaurant owner ke liye pay kiya hoga. But not to the jamin, but not to the paid. Uske liye, there is only one way to repay is by becoming the same plant. The only way to come out of this, offer to Krishna. Because it is Krishna who created the entire universe, it is he who created hunger within us, it is he who is giving solution.
The same rule applies for water. We drink water, so we have to bring water in.
No, no, water is one of the element, nah, water is one of the five elements. He wrote that, water is not a living entity. So in that way.
According to this logic, like everyone should prefer than eating non-vegetarian because killing a hen will just complete some hunger, like for two times a day for a single person. But if we are dependent on rice, then we might have to kill more than one plant, so we have to take the birth more than once for two-time meal, like.
See, see, don't, don't think like that. Even whether you eat chapati or non-vegetarian thing and all, you are not only doing one, you are actually adding so many other things also. You add tomato and vegetables and all the masalas, everything as contribution. It's not that, but you are killing a living entity which has got higher consciousness, that inflicts you in more sin. Actually, the result is not only in this way. For plant, you may have to take birth as plant only, because that is unavoidable thing. You have to eat, you cannot avoid it. But you can survive even without eating meat. Plant ke liye narak naana nikha jarut nahi, but animal ke liye narak jana padega. That is a bigger sin. Apko buddhi diya, kis ke liye? Analyze karne ke liye. See, there are two kinds of people. There are some people, they live to eat. There are some people who eat to live, in which category you want to be? So samval karho. So now, Karma, Jnana, Yoga, Tapasya, Vairagya, Bhakti, all these things which help us come out of the Avitya and they will help us going back, come back to Godhead. All these things are given to us by Shastra. Shastra provides us all these things, which are given by Brahmaji to all of us. Taking shelter of which, we can immediately go back, come back to Godhead. If we don't take shelter of any of these things, we remain in Avitya only and we continue to change from one species to other species, life after life. Pradana plus Avitya, Karma Bandhan. Pradana plus Vidya? Liberation. Going back, come back to Godhead. So whose association you want? Please select wisely. Vidya Association or Avitya Association? So, select wisely. So, fine. So now, Pradana plus Avitya, when these two combine, what are the different manifestations? How, what are the different species that are under Karma Bandage, Karma Bandhan? Karma Bandhan mein aane ke baad, kaisa kaisa janam lena padte humko? Ped ka janam lethe hum. Shee prakar ka plantsay. There are six category of plants, their situation is like this. They distribute their nourishment upwards. Bhagavatam defends, what do you mean by plant? Plant is that which takes nourishment from the roots and it goes all over the tree. Their nourishment is basically from the roots and it is all going upward. They are almost unconscious, Tamapraya, the plants are almost unconscious. They don't speak so much. But have a feeling of pain within on being cut, Antaspresha. When we cut the branches, when we plug the vegetables, they feel pain, but they can't express the pain. They are not fixed in size, but have unlimited variety. The plants are all different types. They are not of one variety, every plant looks different, they are not same. And their bodily structures are also entirely different. There are total six category of plants that are there around us. They are given different names. First one is Vanaspati. There are some plants which provide fruits without any flowers, directly fruits will come, apple. Second one is annual plants. There are some plants which only live for one year and they provide all that we need. All the vegetable, food grains are all annual plants. The next one is Lata, creepers. They need some support to grow further, some of the vegetable plants. And Thaksharo, their trunk is hollow, like bamboo and castor, they have hollow trunk. And Viruda, bushes, deep rooted. Bhagavatam says, there are eight things which actually suck to this material world. Viruda means, they are deep rooted, very difficult to uproot. What are the eight things? First one is Aatma, that means our body. Our entire body, our attachment to our body is very strong, deep rooted. With thoda uncomfortable hoga to, hum sahannai karte. Hava thoda kam jada hoga, ye si kam jada hoga, baaj me koi aavaz karega, hum talet naai karte. Turandh gushtao jate. Because we are so much comfortable, we are so much concerned about the comfort of this body. That is our attachment to the body. Jaya, wife, Suta, children, Agara, home, Pashu, in the old days, animals, now, vehicle. Dravina, bank balance, land, positions, Bandhu, a gold. Relatives, friends and relatives, Rajya. This is spoken relation to Parashit Mara, that's why Rajya. For us, our degrees, our job, all these things, our position. Attachment to these things is very deep rooted, very difficult to give them up. That is called Viruda. Viruda means, like the roots of a bush, very difficult to uproot. And then, finally, there are Druma. Druma are those plants, first they produce flowers, then they produce fruits, like mango. They are the six categories among all the plants. All the plants will fall one of these six categories. This is Bhagavatam way of analyzing the distinctions of plants. Next, in the second creation, Lord Brahma created twenty-eight variety of animals. So what is the nature of the animals? They distribute their nourishment horizontally. The animals eat from the front side, the body nourishes horizontally, they excrete from the back side. For the plants, they get nourishment from the bottom and they provide fruits and flowers on the top. Like that, nah, so same way for animals, horizontally. They are extremely foolish, no conception of future, they don't see plan for future. Abhi, animals work on the base of instinct. Abhi ke liye kya chahiye, ohi karenge, pavush ke liye ho sochenge nahi. And Buri Tamaso, they are preoccupied only with food. Twenty-four hours, they keep eating, 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 eating. They don't have any interest, other interest. That is the main thing for the animals. And Granakya, what they are supposed to eat, they understand by smell. Just by smelling, they understand. And Hrdi Avedina, they are devoid of lengthy deliberation. They don't plan for future, they don't contemplate so much about the future, what is going to happen. Mera kya hoga, mera patni ka kya hoga, mera bacha ka kya hoga, they don't think about all these things. And they are unable to remember anything within their heart. Like, for example, a street dog, it may not be able to remember everyone. So, like that. So out of this twenty-eight variety of animals, nine animals are having cloven hoos. Some examples are given. Cloven hoos means, their feet is divided to two parts. They have feet like this, this is one part and this is one part. That kind of division is made so that they can walk slowly. And some examples are this. There are some animals with, without cloven hoos, their feet is like that, like horses and all, camels, which need to run faster, they have this kind of feet. And some animals have fine nails, dogs, tigers, etc. And there are some animals which are known as reptiles, some are known as snakes, some are known as, uh, what do you can, what do you call that? They are, they can live. Ah, amphibian, in the water also, in the land also, like turtle and crocodile, etc. Yo, snakes also, all these things are part of that, macarran and alligator also. And there are birds. Some birds, either they stay in the water or in the sky. They never walk on the land. And there are some birds, either they walk on the land or they fly in the sky, they never enter into the water. They are the example. So water birds are swans, Indian cradle, chakravakas. Land birds are heron, peacock, vultures, cranes, hawks and balukas, crows and hawks. They don't spend so much time in the water. These birds, they always stay in the water, they don't come out of the water. So like that. These are the different categorization of the animals, you see? These are the animals with cloven hoos. These are the animals without cloven hoos. These are the animals with fine nails. These are reptiles, these are land dwelling birds, water dwelling birds and aquatics and Ubachara. So like this. This is the categorization among the animals, as per the Bhagavatam. Then, the most important species. The ninth class consists of the humans, in which food is distributed downward. We eat up, upper se kate, or niche jaake body ko nourish karte hue, niche se nikaltay. It is opposite to plants. And then, they have branded by Rajas, Rajo Adhika. And they are preoccupied with work, with work. Hamesha, work. Where are you going, office, where are you going, here, there, always busy. They think themselves happy even distressed. Dukkecha, sugamarna, how are you? I am fine, I am fine. This is the nature of human beings. Typical Bombay example. That was India, this is in China. China, China. So kabhi kabhi hotay. Abhi recently, either vo tha, nah, isha? Kumbh Mela, they were telling that it taking twenty-four hours for them to go to Kumbh Mela. Because so much traffic they have to cross through and all. So kabhi kabhi hota rehta. Okay, so that is what happens among the humans. And the fourth category is eight types of superhuman beings, the different variety of Devatas. Okay? These are the different variety of Devatas. Eksha Raksasas, main principal Devatas, Adityas, Vasus, Marus, etc. Daitha Danava Sasuras, Gandharva Absaras, Bhuta Peta Pishasas, Sadhyas, Pitrus, Siddha Charanavidyadaras, Kinnaras, Kimpurushas. Like this, four types of creations were made by Brahma by the combination of Pradana and Avitya. These are the four things we go up and down. Upper niche chelta reenge. Kabhi pasupakshi, kabhi virks, ped powda, kabhi manush, kabhi devi devata, usme asur, bhoot, pradisha, sahkoch, usme ajaate. E char cheez me, hum upper niche, upper niche jata rehte. How many of you heard this book, Nectar of devotion? Nectar of devotion. You heard nah? The Moolagrantah for that is Bhakti Rasaamur Sindhu. In that, Flarubago Swami quotes one verse from Padmapurana. It says that, whenever you go to temple, you should do four times Pradikshana. Whichever temple you go, you should do four times Pradikshana. By doing four times Pradikshana and praying to the Lord, one will not take birth in these four species. Plants, animals, human beings and superhuman beings. Padmapuranka. So these are the four things which are binding in this material world, Karma Bandhan. Ek Karma Bandhan se bahar aane ke liye, we need to take shelter of Vidya. Vidya matla Vedic literatures. So Vedic literature to hai, buk to hai, bak buk, buk ko padane wala, koi to chahiye nah, humko? Buk me kya hai, usko samjane ke liye koi chahiye? We need Acharyas. So who are the Acharyas came to help us understand Vidya and practice Vidya and go back, come back to Godhead? That is explained in the next. First, the four Kumaras appeared from Brahma as the teachers of four Angas of Vidya. Of the, of the six, Sangka, Yoga, Vairagya and Tapas. These four are taught by four Kumaras. The four Kumaras are the Acharyas of Jnana Yoga and Astanga Yoga. In order to practice Jnana Yoga or Astanga Yoga, one need to be in the renounced order. Either as Nastika Brahmacari or Vana Prasara Sanyasi only, they can practice Astanga Yoga or Jnana Yoga. A grasta cannot practice Jnana Yoga and Astanga Yoga. If a teacher supposed to teach someone how to practice Jnana Yoga, Astanga Yoga, the teacher should be practicing Jnana Yoga, Astanga Yoga. Otherwise, how can he teach? So in order to set a good example, the four Kumaras decided to remain as the Nastika Brahmacaris. So that they can tell others, if you want to practice Jnana Yoga, Astanga, remain Nastika Brahmacari or Vana Prasara Sanyasi and practice. Apne Acharya Di Prabhu, Jiveera sikaila. Peile ya paran karo, baad bhi sabko sikao. So four Kumaras are practicing it and they are teaching everyone. How to practice Jnana Yoga, Astanga Yoga? Next. Ten Manasa Putras were born to Brahma. Marichi, Atre, Pulasya, Pulaha, Kratu, Vasista, Angira, Daksha, etc. All these are Prajapatis. They are all Gurastas, married people, well-married, other than Narada. In order to practice Karma Yoga, one should be married. Marriage is a prerequisite to practice Karma Yoga. Those who are married only, they can practice Karma Yoga. So these are the Acharyas of Karma Yoga. They are the teachers of Karma Yoga. Never ever think that they are Badajiwas, they are all teachers. All these Acharyas, Marichi, Angira, Atre, Pulasya, Pulaha, Kratu, Brugu, Vasista, Daksha, Kasyapa. All these great sages whose names we hear in Ramayan Mahabharata Bhagavatam, they are all teachers of Karma Yoga. How to practice Ishkam Karma Yoga in order to attain liberation? That is what they are doing. So they are practicing and they are teaching everyone. And finally, Naradamuni, is the teacher of Bhakti Yoga. Of the six Sanghas, Karma is taught by all the great sages. Jnana, Vairagya, Tapasya and Astanga Yoga are taught by four Kumaras. Bhakti is taught by Naradamuni. These are the propounders of these sadanas. After them, their disciples are carrying it forward. Their representatives are carrying it forward and helping us how to practice all these things. By taking shelter of these six things, By taking shelter of these six things one can become freed from the influence of five coverings of avidya That can help us to go back home back to godhead So finally last few minutes so now to teach us vidya all these acharyas came Okay But they take shelter of shastra How shastra manifested through Brahma that is also explained in the Bhagavatam third canto Briefly we will see what are the different means and ways the shastra manifested so in that way These are some important things Four vedas four upavedas astadasha mahapuranas astadasha lagupuranas itiyasas Different processes of performing different fiery agnas and four kinds of priests to perform agna Ota udgata advaryo brahma etcetera and dharmasasras which talk about Four legs of dharm and which also talk about four orders of varna and ashraman And other shasras like this all different Things associated with vedic literature they are all manifested from Brahma According to modern science according to Gogul Guru when our alphabets were manifested whatever alphabets we use nah Who angreji vala ABCD ho hamara Bharat vala IEO jobiye kab kab tair hua isab Kitna sal paila tair hua
Few million years ago
Nahi Gogul me try karlo Samse teetha don years back samse teetha don years back uske paila kuch nahi nahi bolte Malap unka hisaab se unka baad itna history hai uske hisaab se bol rai uska Google ki nahi But all these things are manifested by Brahma at the very beginning of the creation The fifty-six alphabets I E consonants ovals all these things are created by Brahma Sarigama padani saptasvaras created by Brahma all the grammatical rules they are created by Brahma and then The poetry writing poetry writing stories they are created by Brahma For people to earn their livelihood the occupational duties are also created by Brahma There were four kinds of occupational duties for common people for Brahmanas performing agna it is their occupational duty For chetrias administration and fighting that is called dhanurveda one of the four upavedas And there is another one dhanurveda next one is ayurveda To keeping our health in a proper way ayurveda is there dhanurveda ayurveda Third one is gandharvaveda for manoranjan music dance arts writing poetry writing prose chitralaikanam Playing instruments all these things are part of gandharvaveda they are also manifested by Brahma Finally stapatyah are artasasra City construction building construction road construction garden construction temple construction all such things part of stapatyah Today whatever education you see they all fall under these four categories only Either dhanurveda ayurveda gandharvaveda stapatyah stapatyah means all engineering Dhanurveda means all administrative related the police and administration everything in that part of that And ayurveda medical science And gandharvaveda all finars nothing beyond this people either doing one of these things only not more than that Other than Brahmanas Brahmanas are into patan patan nidan yajan etcetera performing agna all those things So all these things who are manifested by Brahma at the very beginning of the creation After creating everything in order to make the universe self-sustained Finally so what all Brahma created the four vedas six vedangas four upavedas purana itiyasas dharmasasras Niyasasras mimoasas like all these different variety of vedic literature And to study understand alphabets and musical notes and grammar everything has been part of that everything has been created To make the universe self-sustain finally the Brahma has created svammanu and his wife the raja has been created the king The because it is a king when he performs agna All the other people who are created till now they are sustained Their nourishment depends upon the agna performed by the king When they are nourished they will provide us rain sunlight wind all other things moonlight As a result of that we get food vegetables fruits flowers everything So there is a mutual dependency has been created by Brahma after the creation of all the variety of living in it is It is the king who is responsible to make sure that the agna is happening regularly Then they will be satisfied then we get what we need then we perform agna again they will be Nourished and they provide what we need there is a mutual dependency When we give what they need they give us what we need like that both of us are nourished This is a mutual dependency system that has been ordained within us within our this is our Svammanu shaturupa simultaneous existence mutual dependence so basically Sahayagna prajasustva puravacha prajapati aneena prasiddhism ye shavosthi istakamaduk While creating all these people Brahma also established the principle called as agna When we perform agna they are nourished when they are nourished they provide what we need So now we are devotees the agna is normally performed by householders who are part of karma yoga But we are devotees so what kind of agna we should do Agna nam Japegnusmi japegnas means bhakti performing bhakti is also agna So when we do bhakti properly we are nourishing the devatas when the devatas are nourished We will get whatever natural resources that we need like that they are mutually we are helping each other all of us can prosper together If we stop practicing bhakti they will stop providing what we are supposed to get may not be immediately after some time Then everything becomes a scarcity famine all these things will take place This is a mutual dependent system that has been manifested by Brahma in the entire universe So this is the like sequence of creation all those things happen etcetera So these are few things that are mentioned in the Bhagavatam third canto why and how the creation happened Brahma What all Brahma did we are discussed today briefly what Vishnu did we discuss yesterday Of course because we had less time we could not go into details in everything I just gave you some overview So those who are interested please read Bhagavatam third canto Hare Krishna yes Pruj
My doubt was that you said that because we perform yajna and that's why we get the supplies from the devatas
Yes
But today we in today's version there we see that European countries have a lot of natural resources and so and so A lot of prosperity is there but I don't think there is a culture of doing yajna and they even know about devata
That is simply result of their previous karmas what we are getting today is a result of what we have done yesterday If you don't do agna today tomorrow we starve Annad bhavanti bhutanee parijanya annasambava this is verse from third chapter Bhagavatam Annad bhavanti bhutanee everyone depends upon anna but anna comes from rain Annad bhavanti parijanyo agnat bhavanti parijanya but rain will come only when we perform agna Agna karma samudhavaha agna is accomplished when we execute our varna ashrama duties This is a principle if we overdo beyond this principle We will encounter the results maybe in the future life may not be now Because of their previous achcha good karma has given them birth in a good atmosphere if we misutilize now tomorrow we will suffer So like that Any other questions Aap log ko achha laga or time pass ho gaya I am sorry because of the time limit I went very fast but
This time starting varaha and pranas Jiska my body body pe functioni hoti hai
Ah
To Agar jo me rogue hoti hai body pe Ten pranas ke vaise hoti hai
Ah ten pranas me aasantulan ke vaise rogue ho jaate
Best connection between this prana and ayurveda
Ah yes ayurveda brings the pranas into proper not only ayurveda even when do pranayama also the ten pranas become healthy and natural Then one keeps good health
Or these are pranas are because place of Krishna so relation between this
Yeah see everything is supposed to be used for service and Krishna only there is a relationship also but in general when you analyze the anatomy of the body that's how we have to see them
Correct sequence
Ah correct proper sequence how it happened by Brahma
Then Brahma jake pota hota marichi marichi pota hota kasya Kasya dekhiyara patniya Unse sristi bantay niti aditya dattas varaha But muha dattay varaha paila ban chuke
No no wait 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 Brahmagika in a whole day of Brahma there are fourteen manvantaras This is all happening before even before the beginning of svammanatra Kachapake jo sristiwatana that happens in the chakshishamanvanta You heard massavatara pastime when the small fish comes to king And he say he becomes big he said that there is going to be a pralaya in seven days that happened during chakshishamanvanta Because that pralaya people from all over the universe they died So to repopulate Brahma requested daksha so daksha produced sixty daughters they were given marriage to various personalities Seventeen were married to kashapa and kashapa begats most of the different variety of species that happened in the middle not at the beginning this is happening at the beginning So in that way Okay yes Pruj
I liked your class someone like I want to request you if you could extend your class
Ah extend next time when I come we will do it Today it is now I have another class now So regularly every Sunday I have bhakti yoga class But extend means now we have few minutes we can today I am here only Because that class is there yesterday also I cancelled one class today I did not want to class that cancelled that that's why I am keeping that Otherwise I could have next time I will come when I come here I will continue we will discuss in more detail Otherwise if you want to know you can we have a book yesterday I showed the Prabhuji so you can take the book so you can read So this book has got all the details What I am what we discussed nah everything in there in this book
What's the name
Ah Bhagavatavichar Ah so you can take this book this book has got all the details you can read and if you have any queries you can write to me Yeah yes Pruj
You said that Maya has three categories
No three components of Maya
Components of which Maya is
Ah
Pradana
Pradana avidya and vidya
So I wanted to know that Maya is the external energy of Krishna so being the external energy of Krishna I have never heard before that bhakti can be a component of that external energy of Krishna so how is it that vidya is coming under the components of Maya
See bhakti by nature is nirgunna bhakti it is beyond Maya only but as long as while we are in this material world While we are practicing bhakti we would be employing everything in the material world In order to execute bhakti we are using the material products So in that way bhakti is also considered to be part of Maya but when we come to jivmukta platform When you are not using anything within three modes then bhakti becomes nirgunna See for example today if you want to practice bhakti we have to use the material substances in every aspect we have to use material substances So in that way we consider bhakti to be part of three gunas But the day when you don't use anything which is made up of three gunas then your practice of bhakti will be nirgunna Are you getting yeah That means when you go to spiritual world there you don't need any material subjects material objects so then it becomes nirgunna bhakti so in that way It is basically from the point of view of facilitating it is not that bhakti itself is part of Maya The facilitation in order to execute bhakti we need we utilize everything in the three modes so in that way it is it But bhakti itself is nirgunna but we are in three modes so in that Okay ah last question
Yes like manu said that you are speaking that when you use material products When you use material products that is between pradana But when nittasit vashramas like prabhupada and other acharyas came come in this material They also sometimes use this material products so how can we understand that
See see it's okay I understand all was is not that I am demeaning bhakti and all it is explained that Prabhupada even our consciousness to practice bhakti may not be part of three modes our desire to go back home back to God only But the here the issue is even Maya devi from one side she is binding us On the other side she will help us get liberated also Maya devi is like the kind mother okay she will do both the things she will chastise also she will give love also So like that we have to see here So we don't have to analyze too much from that this is only from the point of view of facilitating So when Shilpa Prabhupada uses the material articles he never see them as material articles for prabhupada there is nothing matter Everything is large energy everything is spirit only but for us as of now we don't see it like that For us these are all matter only we see them as matter as of now we don't have we don't have that kind of superior conscience to see everything as a spirit Till then we need to treat it as a matter and use it in the service of Supreme Lord When you come to that point of seeing everything as spirit then you don't think about your own enjoyment Sab kuch Bhagwan ka seva kele use karenge this is the bhakti asa but can we do that now
Suppose there is a reason why that people say that we should not judge purely devoted by seeing material activities that is a mean
Yeah material activities they are doing all these activities because service should go on Because they are doing all these things not for themselves they are doing all these things for No no for us to help all the condition source to go back to God So unkele vo to always should the bhakti apne nijan vajan kar sakthe Amar le itna bada bada mandir kada kar rai amar le itna bada pandal program kar rai amar le itna thirti aata pe lege ja rai Vo amar le unkele nahi Unkele to kaavda raikar abichpi vada me raikar netho urdhan me Waavda raikar apna rada amar mandir me raikar apna vajan kar sakthe Why he is using all these things to help all of us come to Krishna so in that way not for himself but for us so like that we have to see
We will thank Prabhuji Kafi samay galak shasham toh hi class Kafi roneye koi jobse rebody je setto aaj Or What your technical subject matter is Let's express our gratitude and thanks to Prabhuji
Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare
Anyone request Prabhuji because Prabhuji is doing his PhD in IT money He has to pass through Delhi anyway So whenever he comes we will like to make many more such topics Especially Prabhuji has this good hold on the universal cosmology The very cosmology bohot sah Prabhuji ko hai understanding Maybe if we get more time from him we will have more detailed discussion on the structure of the universe house Thank you very much for coming